The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers?
Present.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Present.
Alderman Bosley?
Present.
Alderman Hubbard?
Present.
Alderman Igasiya? Alderman Koltar?
Here.
Alderman Odenberg?
Here.
Alderman Gunther? Alderman Ballmer?
Present.
Alderman Martin?
Present.
Alderman Murphy?
Present.
Alderman Howard?
Present.
Alderman Green?
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Here.
Alderman Rhodey?
Present.
Alderman Ty?
Present.
Alderman Davis?
Present.
Alderman Spencer?
Present.
Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd?
Present.
Alderman Vakoro?
Present.
Alderman Orion?
Here.
Alderman Cole?
Present.
Alderman Clark Hubbard? Alderman Boyd?
Present.
Alderman Navarro?
Present.
President Reed?
Here.
Alderman Igasiya? Alderman Gunther?
Here.
Alderman Mohammed? Twenty-five present.
Coram being present, before we begin today's meeting, join me in a moment of silence for the eighty-three people that we've lost to coronavirus in the city of St. Louis and also a moment of silent prayer for the fourteen-hundred-and-fifty positive cases. We're hoping that, you know, we get through this strong. I think we will get through this strong, but it's going to take all of us working together and praying and giving hope to others. And also a moment of prayer for all of the frontline workers that are out there putting their lives at risk each and every day to keep all of us safe. Start with a moment of silence. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. Before we begin today's meeting, I want to say, you know, last week we were having some bandwidth issues, so things were a little slow and a little choppy. As we move through today's meeting, I'm going to move a little bit slower just to ensure that we aren't missing anybody. And if anyone's Internet's moving a little bit slow, we can see them pop in and raise their hand and ask for a question or whatever. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, May first, twenty-twenty.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the minutes dated May first, twenty-twenty.
Second about Alderman from the thirteenth and Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signal five percent. Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Reporter?
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Board of Adjustment. The reappointment of Mr. John Albert, who resides in the twenty-second ward, whose term will expire December eighteenth, twenty-twenty. The reappointment of Ms. Sally Burke, who resides in the twenty-third ward, whose term will expire December eighteenth, twenty-twenty. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Board of Adjustment.
Yes, Mr. President, I request that the appointments be assigned to the HUDs Committee.
Alderman from the seventeen, we can't wait. Oh, there it is. There you go. It's been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth that we send these appointments to the HUDs Committee.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the fourteenth. Second about Alderman from the fourteenth. Any discussion? The move and the second that we assign these appointments to HUDs. All in favor, signify for saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Sign the mayor's appointments for Board of Adjustments to the HUDs Committee.
No notice. For the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the DeBoliver Place Special Business District. The appointment of Mr. Neil Costello, who's term will expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. The reappointment of Ms. Roberta Butterly, a property owner within the district, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on mayor's appointments to the DeBoliver Place Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the mayor's appointments, Neil Costello and Roberta Butterly, to the DeBoliver Place Special Business District.
The move by Alderman from the twenty-eighth and a second about Alderman from the thirteenth. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I have a question. Point of order.
Alderman from the first, please state your point of order.
Mr. President, members of the board, is it Roberta or Roberts? Because on my agenda, it says Roberts Butterly. Is it Roberta?
Can I answer that, Mr. President?
Mine says.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you can answer that.
Yeah, I noticed the agenda that went out earlier this week said Robert, so I emailed Sharita during the week and she replaced it and updated the agenda with today with Roberta. It is Roberta Butterly.
Okay, and so in keeping with my shock at what's going on with the doctor, I'm not opposed to this being passed. I just want to vote present. So I want a roll call because I want to vote present on these appointments because now even something as small as this, I have questions about. When I hear the mayor's office coming out with statements about it's okay that the doctor is not licensed and our seventy-five requirements, so I want a roll call. I request a roll call so I can vote present.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Alderman from the nineteenth?
I would just like to go back to the process that everybody was doing before, and we just sent them to committee. That way, it gives us an opportunity to learn and know who some of the people are, and it kind of clarify, it would clarify a lot of things and you'll have input. So if we could just send it to committee, that should help with this process.
Any further?
That was the process.
Hold on, hold on a second. Before everybody's mic's on, so before you start speaking, just, you know, ask to be recognized. And once I recognize you, you're free to speak. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the sixth.
She's muted.
They're working. They're getting her unmuted.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I'm unmuted now. I just wanted to make a quick comment that a couple of times I have put my appointees for businesses in the sixth ward or other mayoral appointments into committee and nobody shows up to vet them. So I think if we want to make a commitment to vet these folks, then we have to have a commitment from the aldermen that there actually is some level of interest in showing up to committee hearings, so we're not wasting the time of committee members and chairs of committees.
Alderman from the fourteenth?
I just, I just thought, point. Last session decided that all appointees would be assigned to a committee, but that is if the alderwoman, you know, what the alderwoman from the sixth is saying. You know, we don't need to waste people's time, but at the same time, if we're going to do it, people need to show up and vet these people.
All right. Any further?
That's all I have to say.
Okay, any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-eighth?
Thank you, Mr. President. My recollection of the process has been all citywide appointments would go to a committee, but last session, these neighborhood-wide appointments for special business districts where these people are representing maybe a few blocks of taxpayers have not been going to committee. And I mean, I'm just speaking that from my own experience. I mean, I know that I have put forth several of these commissioners for special business districts, and I know we approved several of these. And so my understanding, and I'm, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, was that citywide appointments, yes, we were making sure to send those to committees, but these smaller ones were being passed on the floor. So I guess I renew my motion.
Hold on a sec. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have vetted both of these candidates and they have gone through the mayor's, the process that she uses for SPDs. And I've also spoken with the commissioners of the board that they are going to be, that they would be placed upon. And so I feel like for the scope of this, of these appointments, I think that they have been thoroughly vetted. And so I renew my motion that we approve the mayor's appointments for the DeBoliver Place Special Business District.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, second about Alderman from the thirteenth that we approve the mayor's appointments to the DeBoliver Place Special Business District. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers?
No.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Igasiya?
Aye.
Alderman Koltar?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Ty?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vakoro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cole?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed? Twenty-five aye votes and one no vote.
My voice staying the motion, Alderman from the twenty-eighth and approve the mayor's appointments to the DeBoliver Place Special Business District.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Locust Central Special Business District. The appointment of Mr. David Schlaflie, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. The appointment of Mr. Sutton Meggie, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderman from the sixth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Locust Central Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the mayor's appointments to the Locust Central Business District.
The move by Alderman from the seven. Any discussion? Alderman from the first?
Again, I was going to vote present, but after the Alderman from the twenty-eighth talked about that she vetted the people, that made me vote no because she can't vet for the full board of aldermen. In fact, how the mayor, and not just this mayor, but other mayors have done their nomination, they don't tell you what the requirements are, so you don't know if the people are fitting the requirements or not. We have found that out by rules, how many things were wrong as far as when we get board bills and rules. So the whole point of vetting is for the full board to be able to see what's going on, to even know these people. If it was only meant to be for the alderperson of the ward, then it would have been a vote for the mayor and the alderperson of the ward. It's for the full board to sustain this thing, sustain the nomination. And I'm therefore now going to be asking for a roll call for all of them and voting no unless we can have before us an explanation of what they're being nominated for, what the requirements to be on that board are, and that check off that they have been fulfilled. Because what alderperson saying they did it and that they vetted it is not satisfactory to me. I want to see us as a board do our full job, and therefore I will be voting no on all of them. As to what the alderwoman from the sixth said about that people don't come, that is because a lot of times when they set the meeting, they set them at the same time that people are having other meetings, so it makes it very hard. Several times I objected to things, and then they set it right at the same time that we have public, that we have rules. So I couldn't get over there because I was at another meeting. So we could set things so that other people can come because I really want to be at this Board of Adjustment. I have lots of questions to ask people. And I also want to say to this board that we need to be careful that we let a mayor start making appointments at this late date. Hello? Hello? Am I still here? Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, you're still there.
Yeah, you're still there.
All right, because I went off all of a sudden. We have to be careful because what we do is we let a mayor wait and not fill these appointments, and then we stack them up so that the next mayor will have appointments that the other mayor has done at the last minute. So we need to look at the overall big picture of what we're doing at this point. To me, if we're going to be allowing these things to happen, then they should have to expire at the time they would have, not wait and let people be appointed at the last few months of a term and then let them last for four more years into the future or three years or whatever it is. So we really need to be looking at these appointments. I don't have anything. In fact, I know David Schlaflie, I don't have anything personally opposed to opposing either of these people that I know of. But I have, I'm opposed to the process, and I think we let things slip through the cracks because we don't make sure we're doing the correct process.
All right. Alderman from the twenty-seventh and Alderman from the twenty-third, both put their hands up. Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
The question that I have, why, if they're not due up to twenty-twenty-four, why are we putting them forth now?
Would you like to inquire of the sponsor?
Yes, sir.
Alderman from the sixth, will you yield for questioning to Alderman from the twenty-seventh?
Thank you, Mr. President. The terms.
Will you yield the question to the?
Yes, I will yield. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-seventh, please proceed.
Alderman from the sixth, my question is, if their term is not up to twenty-twenty-four, why are we looking at this now?
That's not correct. These are two new appointments and someone is resigning and there's an empty space on the board.
So the information was put out incorrectly?
I'm not sure. I must have missed whatever was mentioned or if there's something in documentation that says something about twenty-twenty-four, that's not accurate.
Yeah, they said that their term is up twenty-twenty-four. Now that's what raised the question to me.
These are two new appointments. These individuals do not sit on the board and there's somebody leaving and there's a vacancy.
Okay.
I think the, I think the new terms would expire in twenty-twenty-four for these two individuals.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-third?
I just want to say, I'll vote, I'm going to vote yes because it's a neighborhood thing, but I absolutely agree with the alderwoman from the first. We're letting so much stuff slide by and the ones that end up being embarrassed when something goes wrong, which I've also received calls from neighbors about Dr. Echols and his ability to be able to shut stuff down in the homeless encampment. It seems like we let a lot of stuff slide. I have no problem voting on the neighborhood stuff, but I one hundred percent agree with the alderman from the first that if we don't start vetting these things ourselves as a board, we're the ones that get embarrassed because it seems to me that people call, at least I know they call me and they want to know why and who had the authority to shut them down if, you know. So anyway, I just want to say I agree with the alderwoman from the first. I will be voting yes on the neighborhood stuff, but I do think we need to reconsider how we're doing this. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Alderman from the first?
Mr. President, I'd inquire if the alderwoman from the sixth would yield?
Alderman from the sixth, will you yield a question until Alderman from the first?
I will.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman, so I understand that some people, two people, I guess, resigned from this board?
I believe. I believe that one person resigned and is resigning, is still there, but will be after this appointment goes through, and then there's one vacancy.
Okay, so are we using one of the, the person that resigned instead of putting them both to twenty-twenty-four? Why wouldn't we just have them finish that term?
Because they're not interested.
So that we keep our terms?
They're not interested in doing so.
Okay, but the whole point of how we set up these boards and commissions so they could have terms is not to let then the mayor or anybody else, be it me be the mayor, play with the way the terms are set up. So it would seem like to me one of them would fill an unexpired term and the other person would then, if it's a new term they're starting. But it should not be set up so that they can both now have two new terms like that. That is going around how we actually set up the commissions and boards.
Okay, I, okay.
I have no further question. That was just an announcement that I wanted to say to you is that that is not the way it's supposed to be. And if we're really going to do our duty as members of the Board of Aldermen, it is oversight and we need to do it correctly because we cannot criticize others when we're not doing our job. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
Okay, any further questions? Any further questions? I think Alderman from the nineteenth?
Mr. President, I just wanted to share with you that aside from those concerns, I shared that responsibility for that board, and I was not notified properly about these appointments. I have no problems with, David Schlaflie is, his business is in the nineteenth ward. The other gentleman I know nothing about, and that's okay if I have been shared some type of information. I think all the concerns that have been voiced, it might be in our best interest to table this, gather all the appropriate information, and we can present it again at the next board meeting. I don't see any reason why that would create any kind of problem.
Alderman from the, Alderman from the sixth, would you like to hold this over till next week since the alderwoman from the nineteenth has not, was not informed about any of the appointments and both of you share the Locust Central Business District?
I would be happy to do that, and my apologies, it was my understanding that for a while we took turns doing appointments and then the alderwoman from the nineteenth indicated that she no longer wanted to make appointments to the Locust Business District. So I will hold it next week and confer with the alderwoman from the nineteenth to make sure we're on the same page.
Alderman from the seventh, would you like to withdraw your second? Alderman from the seventh, would you like to withdraw your second?
Yes, I will draw my second.
And Alderman from the sixth, would you withdraw your first?
I sure will. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Send correspondence to the mayor's office to inform the, to touch base with the alderwoman from the nineteenth about the appointments that they're looking to make to the Locust Central Business District.
No notice. That is the extent of reporter city officials.
Dispense with line item seven through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill One, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Ballmer. City's annual budget appropriation for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, amounting in the aggregated to the sum of one billion, one hundred sixteen million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred ninety, ninety-seven dollars, which sum is hereby appropriated from revenue and special funds named for the purposes hereinafter enumerated and contained in emergency clause. Board Bill Thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission and the Board of Estimate and Apportement making appropriation for the transfer of the sum of five million, five million dollars from the Parking Meter Fund to the General Reserve Fund of the City of St. Louis to help offset expenditures from the General Reserve Fund necessitated by the COVID-nineteen pandemic and the extraordinary costs incurred by the city in its efforts to protect the health and well-being of the public and containing that emergency clause. Board Bill Fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller of the City of St. Louis to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of ten dollars and other good and valuable consideration, a quick claim deed to remind, release, and forever quick claim unto the Board of Education, I'm sorry, Board of Education, certain city-owned property located in City Block Zero Three Six Two, which property is known in number as eleven-hundred Monroe Street, St. Louis, Missouri, six-three-one-zero-six, and eleven-zero-one Madison Street, St. Louis, Missouri, six-three-one-zero-six, in the City of St. Louis, Missouri. Board Bill Fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Vakoro, and ordinance adopting the twenty-eighteen International Plumbing Code with Amendments, repealing ordinance six-nine-two-five-five and containing the penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill Sixteen, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordinance to provide for the borrowing of funds in anticipation of the collection of tax payments levied by the City of St. Louis, Missouri for deposit in its general revenue fund for the calendar year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, and remaining uncollected and other revenues remaining to be collected and deposited in the general revenue fund for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. All such revenues for the general revenue fund in the treasury of the City of St. Louis, Missouri through the issuance of the City of St. Louis, Missouri of its tax and revenue anticipation notes and the acquiring of credit enhancement if necessary in order to lower the cost of such borrowing, prescribing the form and details of such notes, authorizing and approving certain documents and other actions and containing that emergency clause. Board Bill Seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Howard, and ordinance approving a blinding study and redevelopment plan for forty-five-hundred through forty-five-ten South King Highway Redevelopment Area. Board Bill Eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Howard, and ordinance approving a blinding study and redevelopment plan for forty-three-fourteen I Tastic Street Redevelopment Area. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill One, fourteen, and sixteen, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill Thirteen, to Public Safety, Board Bill Fifteen, to Neighborhood Development, Board Bill Seventeen and Eighteen. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of public employee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill Nine, sponsored by Alderman Howard, an ordinance pertaining to the employees' retirement system of the City of St. Louis, the retirement system by repealing Section Two of Ordinance Seven Zero One Five Four and acting in lieu thereof a new provision in order to comply with the federal setting every Community Up for Retirement Enhancement Act, twenty-nineteen, the Secure Act, and containing that emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading reported committees.
We're dispense with line items fourteen through twenty, first reading resolution.
Resolution Eight, sponsored by. Resolution Eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Green, and the following all the persons. Alderwoman Boyd, Rice, Martin, and Gracia Spencer, Navarro, Gunther, Mohammed, Jeffrey Boyd, Murphy, Narayan, Vacaro, and Middlebrook, absentee voting during COVID-19.
All the one from the 15th, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number eight.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to request unanimous consent.
Objection.
There's been an objection to unanimous consent.
Um, I think, uh, so I, I'm asking for unanimous consent just for some clarity here. Um, time is of the essence in getting this done. Um, while I am amenable to sending it to committee, it loses us a week in moving this forward, um, before being able to get the ballots out for the, uh, June election. And so I think the longer that we postpone this, the harder it is, or the harder that it will be, um, to, to ensure that we get some of these voting mechanisms in place before, um, folks head to the polls in late June.
All right, um, Alderman from the 25th, you recognize. Alderman from the 25th. Alderman from the 25th.
Yeah, I would just like to be added as a co-sponsor, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, please make, make note of that. Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize.
Yes, what I, what I'd like to say is, if it goes to committee, I'd like to send it to Public Safety only if, and I would ask the clerk if that could be put on the agenda for this Tuesday meeting that's already scheduled for Public Safety. Because I'd like to get this out on Tuesday if we can't get it out today. I'm forgetting it out today, but if we can't get it out today, and if there's no problem with the sponsor, and if the clerk can put it on the agenda for this Tuesday, and so just, I, I'd like to know, I would, I would actually vote, voted on Tuesday. If it goes to Public Safety, I'm all for passing it today.
All the one, all the one from the fifth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I, I definitely am in support of us, um, engaging our constituents in the, um, absentee process. I just have some questions and concerns about it, and when reading, uh, the resolution, I mean, it, some valid points were being made, and you know, it spoke of how, uh, how Corona has disproportionately impacted African Americans and, and all of that, and so I just, I just hope that the resolution is not something subliminal. I hope that the resolution is not something that, um, is being used as a, a means to campaign a little differently because current candidates do have to campaign differently right now. And I just hope that if in fact this happens, if we have the purview to make this happen, um, is the Board of Election ready for it? If someone loses their ballot in the mail, can they still come in, in person and, and do the envelope, or will they vote, uh, by machine or whatever? I mean, of course, you, you know, I have endured this whole process, you know, unfortunately in a lot of different ways, and I hope that it's something that we are being very genuine about because, uh, in, in my community, in my ward, I have a lot of seniors and many of them vote absentee, and, um, some are under 60, some are over 60 or whatever, but I just want us to be equitable in the process of handling this and making sure that we are doing it right, and if our current Board of Election has the capacity to do it right. And so I don't think it's something, yes, there's an election coming up pretty quickly, but I don't think it's something that we should, um, willy-nilly around with and, you know, do something subliminal. I, it was my understanding that those kind of, um, changes had to come by way of the state or the Secretary of State or something, so I, I know we all are concerned about it, we definitely do need to, um, revisit that process so people can exercise their right to vote by any means. I'm definitely a proponent of absentee voting, but I just hope that there's true current concern about it and that we're really doing it right, and that we're not just doing this because people have to campaign a little differently now that everything is going on. So those are all my comments, and I'm looking forward to seeing some of the questions I just may come out in committee to see how, if in fact, uh, they do move forward with this, how it would actually operate. And thank you, I have no further comments.
Any further, any further questions? Any further questions or comment? All the one from the 14th.
Um, yes, I, I share the same concerns as the alderwoman, uh, Hubbard. I think that it needs to be vetted, I think we need to move carefully when we're talking about voting rights, and, um, I think, you know, uh, just doing a blanket mailing to everyone over 60 is sort of a random way. We have a lot of people with health issues, handicap issues, um, and I think we're leaving a population out of this, uh, as well. So I think we need to move a little bit slower, I don't think we need to rush this through. If we can hear it Tuesday in Public Safety and get some more input on it, I think it, it would be good. Also, I think we need to look at what's going on statewide. Um, are we, you know, jumping the gun here? So, uh, with that said, I, I would move that it be assigned to a committee. Thank you, that's all.
Alderwoman from the 14th, are you making a motion or would you want to wait? Uh, there's still some.
I would like to make a motion to assign it to, uh, Public Safety.
It's been moved by all the one.
Objection.
There's been an, an objection.
You can't object once.
Hold on for a second, hold on for a second. Um, entertain a second on that motion.
Well, hey, I still have a question.
Hold on for a second. The move by the, all the one from the 14th, second by the all the one from the fifth, that we, uh, send resolution number eight to committee. There's been an objection, uh, to that motion. Alderman from the first, please state your, your objection.
I, so I'm sorry, I thought that it was being sent to Public Safety. So my objection, not that it shouldn't go to committee, that it go to Public Safety, that is a legislative matter or some other matter, it is not a Public Safety. I, I adore the alderman from the 23rd for wanting to get it done, um, fast, but I think we should try to send these things to the proper committee, that's the only objection. I don't, uh, other than that, I withdraw my objection, uh, because I thought her motion was for specifically to send it to Public Safety.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Alderman from the 23rd.
So the reason I'm saying Public Safety, we already have a meeting scheduled, and again, I would ask the clerk if we can add that to the agenda, that's the only reason, so that by the next Friday's meeting, we're ready to go. I, I, I understand the differences in committees, but since we're doing these virtually, I think everybody could join that meeting, not just members of Public Safety, and we can leave them questions open to everyone, not just the, not just only the members of, of Public Safety. The only reason I said that is only if the clerk can add it to the agenda, you know, because there's already one there. I, I'm just thinking of, how do we speed this along? Like I said in the beginning, I'm for passing this, but then other good questions came up, and I would love to see, you know, maybe Gary Stoff or some members of the, uh, Board of Elections brought in on the same, uh, video so that we can, you know, come up with, with a good answer. I had sent him, and he sent me back a, a thing saying it's illegal, but they're doing it in the county, uh, you know, but people would be falsifying, you know, the absentee ballots that they sent them in. Uh, it, it's, it's kind of a mix. So I think that if you're afraid to go out in public and you're having your groceries delivered to your house, you should still have the right to vote. I'm for the homeless people, which seem to be really hard to figure out how to let them vote because they won't let them have a permanent residence, and if we put where they're staying at now in the hotels, I guess we can have them vote out of the hotels, but it does, it does seem like somehow certain groups of people don't get the opportunity to vote. Um, anyway, I'm trying to just speed it along, I have all the respect for the alderwoman from the first, and if she had a committee set up, you know, that was set and somehow they could do something and make sure that that committee's heard the first part of next week, but it seems hard to schedule these meetings. It took two weeks for me to get this one meeting scheduled because of timing on the Zoom thing and all that. So that's the only reason I'm suggesting Public Safety, um, you know, and, and I would welcome everybody in all the comments, but again, I would ask, and he's on here, I would ask that if we do it, will the clerk, can that be put in for this Tuesday's meeting?
And then, Alderman from the 23rd, the timing would allow for that to happen, so we could meet posting requirements, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I want to make sure.
But you could, we, we, we can't allow an open discussion between you and the clerk during this, uh, during this full board meeting.
I understand, but I feel assured it could be put on Tuesday. I, you know, and again, with all due respect from, from the alderwoman from the first, if, if there's a way she can do it and have it so we can be ready for next week, I'm fine with that, but otherwise, I really appreciate getting the Public Safety. I, you know, I would let the alderwoman from the first speak, in fact, all the alderpeople speak, and I would ask that we have some people from the election board come over, um, and, and I'll just kind of sit back and listen. I, I'm fine, but I do know that there's an importance of getting this out.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the, Alderman from 27th, you had your hand up for quite a while.
No, I'm fine, uh, Alderman Vacaro, he said it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Alderman from the 11th.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say I fully support this effort. Um, it seems really straightforward and, uh, perhaps we're complicating it a little bit. Um, if you look like, in places like Wisconsin where we just waited too late, or, I'm sorry, the state, um, politics were at play and decisions were made too late and people paid for it, and it's over 60 because that is, 60 is the age at which you become high risk for COVID. Um, so I understand that there are concerns about other types of, or other categories of people, um, or other types of voting, but really, I think this is, um, it's been done in other areas, and again, it's very straightforward, um, and I fully applaud this effort. I think this is really, um, what we need, uh, to, uh, be prepared and, um, ensure that, uh, as many folks as possible in a high-risk population have access to the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the eighth. Alderman from the eighth.
Sorry, I've had microphone problems there. Um, yeah, I, I just wanted to say that this, this resolution isn't changing any law, we're not, um, we're not attempting to, uh, create new voting rules as they are, it's just giving people, more people the opportunity to use an absentee ballot without having to specifically request one, so, um. Megan sent, the alderwoman for the 15th sent around, um, detailing the legal opinions as to what would qualify as one of the, the legally valid excuses, um, on our absentee ballots, I think are pretty clear. Um, so all it is, is just giving people the opportunity, um, without having to request a ballot, so opening up the absentee ballots to more folks than would normally request one. So we're not trying to change any law, we're trying to, um, just create more options for the folks who may qualify, um, during a pandemic that wouldn't necessarily otherwise be able to check one of those boxes on absentee ballots. Um, so I'm, I'm fully in support of the resolution if we need to hash the.
All the one.
Using, but it, it's not a board bill, we're not trying to, um, we're not trying to create new law, we're just, uh, asking the, the Board of Elections to send out the ballots so that more people have access to it.
Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, I appreciate what they're trying to do. I have had, I have concerns because, um, although we are all Democratic Board, uh, there are Republicans at the state level, and, um, a lot of people don't understand the absentee process. If you mail these things out, uh, blanketally like that, they will think that that is the go-ahead for them to do it. So, um, uh, we are very careful in our ward, I've been doing absentee ballots for a long time, and so if you just send them out without some, some direct warnings about, these are the only ways that if you don't fit one of these categories, that you can be prosecuted for illegally, uh, voting absentee, that's the problem that I have with just sending it out, and I think that the Republicans would use that as a, uh, a weapon against us. Um, as far as me objecting to it going to Public Safety, again, it's nothing, uh, I'm not on, uh, legislation, I didn't ask it to come to rule, I just think that we ought to be doing things more appropriately in legislation, if you're going to send it to a committee, is something that, uh, where it should go if you're going to have to send it to a committee. Also, I want to say, I'm, I'm surprised when I hear the alderman from the 23rd say it took him two weeks to get a Public Safety meeting set up. Um, so I guess I have questions about what is our access to Zoom? I thought we were paying for us to have access and so that we could have normal meetings the way we would have a normal meeting, which would mean that the Chair of Legislation or some other committee, which I think would be more appropriate than, uh, than, uh, Public Safety, should be able to call a meeting today and then it be set up for next week. So, um, I guess I don't have information and I, um, uh, and I'll ask the, uh, President later why we don't have access to Zoom when we need it, or the clerk, that will be a conversation we have off of the, uh, camera. If the only way we can have this right away is to do this, um, by sending it to Public Safety, then I won't, I won't object, I just don't think that's appropriate committee. I do have some questions about, I agree with everything you're trying to do, but, um, a lot of times, people just don't understand absentee ballot, and it gets a lot of people into trouble, and I don't want that to be the case here. Uh, I've had people right now calling me up, asking for absentee ballots, and when I go over the process, they're like, oh no, none of those things fit. So unless, uh, we're going to get the Secretary of State or the state to, uh, change the law, if we send these things out here and we get a lot of people in trouble, I just, if we're going to do that, I want the Board of Election to send something saying, you can only vote absentee if you meet this criteria, or some kind of warning. I don't want people to be caught up thinking because we mailed it to them, that it's okay for them to vote absentee.
Alderman from the 14th.
I would like to change my motion.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Please proceed, Alderman.
I would like to motion, I would like to make a motion that, um, this resolution be sent to an appropriate committee as deemed by the President.
Been moved by the, uh, Alderman from the 14th and Alderman from the fifth, do you keep a second on that? Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I've.
Uh, any further discussion, Alderman from the 15th?
I would, uh, to answer one of the, uh, kind of concerns from the alderwoman from the first, in St. Louis County, they didn't just send out the ballot, they sent, or the ballot application, they sent a pretty thorough letter along with it describing what the qualifications are and what needed to be in place in order for you to, uh, to fill this out. And so I think that there are ways that we can make sure that education happens, um, alongside this, but, um, I'm willing to, uh, to have this in committee next week, um, I'm happy to have it in the Public Safety Committee or the Legislation Committee, um, either one of them is, is fine by me, um, and we can get some, some folks in there to testify pretty quickly and hopefully get this out next week.
Okay, all right. It's been moved and seconded that we send resolution number eight to committee. Um, all in favor, signify for saying aye. Motion carries. Second read. Madam Clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was muted, we have none.
Uh, Ms. Lanis, I'm finished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, May 12th, Public Safety, we're having a meeting at 10:00 AM via webinar. Wednesday, May 13th, Education and Youth Matters, we'll have a meeting at 10:00 AM via webinar. Thursday, May 14th, Ways and Means will have a meeting 10:00 AM via webinar, and Friday, May 15th, full board meeting 10:00 AM via webinar. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to ask for a Streets, Traffic and Refugees hearing at 1 o'clock on Tuesday, May 12th.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Uh, just want to again, thank you. Alderman from the 23rd.
Thank you. Um, I just want to let the Chairman of Ways and Means know that I also have a virtual doctor's appointment at the exact same time on Wednesday, so I may not be able to join that meeting. So I may not be able to join that meeting until roughly, I'm thinking eleven. The, the doctor's appointments are all getting set up.
Alderman, you can, um, you can call the chairman a little bit later and go over that. Uh, all right, any, any further announcements, any further announcements? Uh, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. And I see the Alderman from the, from the second has a visitor with us today, some rabbit ears. Can you unmute the Alderman from the second?
Say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Can you say Happy Mother's Day?
Happy Mother's Day.
Happy Mother's Day.
Awesome. So Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. Uh, and, um, Alderman from the, Alderman from the tenth.
Uh, thank you, sir. The, the address the Alderman from the twenty-third, I found out about his doctor's appointment, that's why he's scheduling me on Thursday.
Any, any further, any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to excuse the Alderman from the twenty-first ward due to necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from twenty-second, entertain a second. Second about Alderman from the tenth. And the visitor from, the visitor from Alderman from the second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
President, members of the board, I move to adjourn to next Friday, May fifteenth, ten AM. Second.
The move by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by Alderman from the thirteenth and Alderman from the tenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we stand adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great weekend.
Thank you.